School board meeting to order, please stand and salute the flag. Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Due to the quality for which stands one nation under God in a visible liberty and justice world.
We truly apologize for the long delay. We were in executive session discussing some personnel and some litigation issues. And with that being said, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Mr. Polyofko, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Saxon. Questions or comments on the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Agenda approved. On to Dr. Schaefer.
Well, we're winding down at the end of the summer. The buildings are looking great. They'll be ready. Everything else, we're just about ready to open. So we're in good shape. But I do want to say, if any of you have an opportunity, stop in Snyder Girardi to see our courtyard and the nice job that all the volunteers did at that courtyard and see how nice it is. It's really something to be proud of.
I heard a lot about it. I heard it looks great.
Yes, yeah.
Good. Anybody have any questions for Tom? Thanks, Tom. On to Superintendent Wright.
Okay, I gave everybody a red folder with some documents in there that I'm going to go over with you, and we have several things that are really just informational items, but some things I need to make you aware of. First thing in your red folder you'll see is a letter from PDE. It's the approval letter for the furlough and curtailment program. They did this last year as well. They wait till sort of the last minute, but we received this today, so that sort of closes that process of curtailment programs and furloughs. There's a copy of that letter there for you. Any questions on that?
No.
Okay, the next set of papers, we'll spend a few minutes on. We will have more detailed AYP information for you in the future. What happens with the AYP information, the PSSA information, is about the middle of the summer, we receive the raw data, the student scores, and there's some information that we can glean from that. Later, there is a appeal period when you receive your initial AYP status, and that's what these papers are that you have in front of us. There are a few reasons you can appeal. We don't really qualify for any of those, nor do we really have any questions regarding the status of our AYP. Then the final reports won't be available until, I believe, October this year. Is that right, Tom?
Yes.
And what that is, is that's when a... DRC is the company that operates this whole assessment system, and when they complete the entire process, then we will have access to a lot more information where we can compare, provide a little bit more information about who's doing what and who's going in what direction. I'm going to give you a summary right now. If you'll notice on the first page, it's the district's report page. It says that the district is in warning. There are several steps in the AYP process. Warning is the first one. If you don't make AYP, you go into warning. We were in warning last year. We did not... Oh, one of the schools was. We'll talk about the high school. So to make AYP as a district, you're broken down into three grade spans, three to five, six to eight, and the high school. And the rules are somewhat complicated, but you have to make AYP in those grade spans at different times, and if you don't make it in each grade span, you have some flexibility. The district does not make AYP. So we have to go back and look at years past, see what years... For instance, if third grade, third through five made it one year but didn't make it the next two years, that could impact it. Or if high school did make it and didn't make it, those sorts of things. So the district is right now in warning. It's not to be completely unexpected. I know that I made this comment once before. Statewide, scores seem to be down. I know some people... You know, we have to compare to something. And I know we aren't as concerned about the state, we're more concerned about Bristol, but the fact is statewide, everybody's reporting that scores seem to be down. One school district near us had a significant fall this year. The other issue is that the targets went up. So if the targets were 65 percent and we scored 66, we would have made AYP last year. Targets went up to 75, and we scored 66 or 67. Again, we don't make AYP. And that's part of No Child Left Behind, and that's how it works. I'm certainly not one to minimize the importance of AYP, but as we look more closely at the data, we'll find out how we're really doing. And as we talked at our last meeting about implementing benchmark assessments and those sorts of things, we should have more information for us. I can tell you that based on the raw data that we got a month ago, we saw some interesting issues. And I don't know that we can pinpoint on a grade, or a section, or a curriculum. Some people are up, some people are down. I think the best news out of all of this is that our science scores, which don't count for AYP unfortunately, are up fairly significantly, and our special ed elementary subgroup actually made AYP for the first time ever. But that's what this first page is telling you. It's telling you about the district. It breaks down our subgroups. You'll see that we only have a handful of subgroups and who made it and who didn't. The second page is the elementary school, and you'll see the elementary school is in school improvement two, which is about the fourth step. It's either the third or fourth. You go from warning to school improvement one first year, school improvement one second year, school improvement two. Tom, I'm not sure if this is first year or second year for school improvement two.
This is second year.
Second year. So clearly, there's been a trend for five years at the elementary school. Again, some positives out of this. Our special ed subgroup at these grade levels improved and actually made AYP, but our reading and math scores are sort of up and down depending on the grade level. And certainly, that, those issues are addressed in our school improvement plan and also addressed in some of the curriculum changes that were implemented before I got here and some of the programs that we will continue. The next...
I have a question on that, if I could.
Yes.
So we're looking at page, the Snyder Girardi, is that the elementary school?
Mm-hmm.
And you just said our special ed, where would that be on the IEP?
If you look at the, yes, IEP line, you'll see the first is participation. Look at math. The first, the top half of the graphics is mathematics. You go down a few lines, you see IEP.
Right.
We had 100 percent participation and met the participation target, yes. In performance in math, no. But if you go down to reading, yes, we did make it.
Yes, okay. Okay, yeah, thank you.
Next page, each report is two pages. You flip two pages, you'll be at the middle school. The middle school is in warning. Again, we have to do a little more grade level analysis on this, but the scores are not terrible scores, but the targets went up and we did see some decreases in some grade levels, but we also saw improvements in grade levels. But they're combined for purposes of AYP. So those are the things we need to drill down to as we get into more specific curriculum ideas and benchmark data. The next page is the high school. The high school is also in warning. High school was in warning last year. What happens with the high school performance is that you have reading and math that you're graded on. So if you make it in reading and don't make it in math the first year, you'll be in warning. The next year, let's say that switches. You don't make it in reading, but you do make it in math, or whichever I said. You stay in warning, and that's what we did. If you look at the performance target for all students in math, it says, yes, we made AYP, but in reading, it's no. Last year, that was reversed. So as long as you show that improvement in one category, you remain in warning. So it's some good news in that we improved our math scores at the high school, but we did not make AYP at the high school in reading. It doesn't mean that we may not have improved, doesn't mean that they fell that much. I think they actually did drop a percentage or two. But again, when we get into the detailed data, you have to understand that, you know, percentage drops in our grades, we had 72 kids in 11th grade, so, you know, one or two kids changes us by a tremendous amount of percentage points, and that's a big, big challenge for us. Some of the details that we saw in, I don't want to say which grade because I don't want to inadvertently identify students, but let's just say, for example, we have a grade of 100 kids, and we failed four kids from previous year. Now, we don't want to make assumptions about those four, but let's say three of those four who were already held back failed the P, or scored below basic or basic on the PSSA. Well, that's all, even if we had 100 kids, that's already a 3 percent difference. And so we had some of those occurrences, and we've been addressing failures and why we need safety nets and those sorts of things. But understand, percentage swings in our scores could be three students, could be four students, especially in some of these grades where we only have 80 kids or 72 kids. In fact, last year's, it was last year's junior class that was significantly smaller. It was only 58 kids.
Yeah.
Something like that. So three kids either way, and we're doubling our percentages up or down.
I just had a couple of questions when you're done.
I'm finished.
And I hear what you're saying. That was one of my questions. So when we compile this data, is there any way that we could possibly kind of flag gate it where we're right on the cusp of, like you said, I look at some of these, even some of these categories, and if we have one child that falls into that demographic and they fail, and then that knocks us out, right?
Right.
So my, and my point is that, A, my first question would have been, did it give you any leeway or no? If you have, say you have three kids and you have to get 75 percent, and two of them, or two of them are good and one of them is bad, and you only have 66 percent, so that is a mark against us, like that puts us...
Right, but they do give leeway. It's called competence interval.
Okay.
But again, in our case, that competence interval might be 1 percent.
Yeah.
So for us, one kid could be 2 percent. So that works against us as well. But yes, they do give us some leeway there. And then the other part of that conversation, John, is that's why we need benchmark data. Because if we do benchmark data properly, we should know who those kids are. I mean, our teachers do know a lot of that information, but without true benchmark data aligned to the PSSA, you know, we should be able to say, we're pretty confident these 42 kids are going to make it, and these 10 are close, and we need to put them in this safety net. And these 10 aren't close, so we need to put them in this safety net and try to get some of them up over there. And it's not just about, let's be clear, it's not just about AYP. It's about those kids need that education, they need that remediation. So, yes, there is some leeway.
My other question was, you know, as far as the graduation rate, we talked about how kind of ours is skewed, and, you know, so a kid starts here in ninth grade and he can leave, he can quit, and, you know, we own him until graduation. So is there any, was there any progress made, or do we come up with any way to try to do a better job of at least trying to tether ourselves to the kids that start here in ninth grade and maybe publish, not with the state, but for our own, you know, purposes, to say, well, look, these are the kids that started here in ninth grade and stayed here in ninth grade and graduated as seniors, and then here's, you know, our other rate that is ratio that's used by the state that says, no, these kids left, and we don't know where they are, or this kid joined the air force, or whatever.
Right. Well, let me say two things. One is, we did improve in that area because of some of our processes, and I can't find it right now, but I believe we did make the target on graduation this year because of the improvement that we made. Second part is, we could do that from a public relations standpoint, probably need to. The state is not going to listen to that, but we could let our own folks know that, hey, you know, of the people who live here and stay here, we're graduating, let's say, 98 percent, but are, but we're skewed by these folks that come in and out, and we could report that publicly.
Yeah, and all I'm saying is, for the public, is that's just another cost that the state throws on us, that, you know, they're stripping us of all our resources, yet now we have to go track down kids who leave.
We have to find kids. If they withdraw or leave, we have to find them. If we cannot figure out where they went, they count against us for graduation.
My last few questions just kind of deal with some of the formats on the report. I see that there's some of them where it says, the school met 17 targets out of 25. Then it says they met 17 out of 24. Then it says they met six out of, or six out of seven.
Right.
So I guess that I can infer that the targets are areas where we were below and that we had to get up above, or, or why is it different? Why, if, you know, my thinking would be that every school would have the same number of targets that we have.
Right, no, it doesn't work. It has to do with the number of students you have and the number of grades you have. So the reason that the elementary school has so many more targets is because they have, they have more kinds of students. If you count up the yeses and nos, that's where you'll get the number of targets. So the high school, again, because we only have, let's say, 72 kids in a class, that eliminates subgroups. We may not have, in order to have a subgroup, you have to have 40 kids.
Yeah.
So if we have, in a grade span of three to five, we're much more likely to have 40 Hispanic kids. So that's a target.
Okay.
But in a grade span of only 11th grade, where we only have 72 kids, we're not likely to have 40 Hispanic kids. We'll have 22, and that's not a subgroup. So every subgroup counts, and the larger the grade span, the more groups you have.
And again, again, just the way the system is set up, it's to the detriment of smaller districts that don't have the critical mass number of students to have a robust subgroup. So we're always on the cusp. So that answers my question. Thank you. The last one was, I see that in some of these, there's NA, and some of these, there's no students. What's the distinction there?
NA means we have students, but not a subgroup.
Okay.
And the other one means no students.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question for you also. On this report, because we have, we're at different levels at the different schools, doesn't mean that we have not addressed not making AYP. As I understand, there are programs relative to the reading, there are plans that have been put in place. So I don't want anybody to think that we're waiting till October to address any of these already identified as previous years. Am I correct in making that assumption?
Right. Yeah, we don't wait to get the data to make our decisions. In fact, we have to submit our school improvement plan well before that, so we kind of know where we're headed. And aside from the AYP status, we know what our issues are in the schools, and that's why we are developing the programs that we're, that we're developing.
Joe, even if you look at the next letter, you will see in the second page, in the action plan, what we've done and what we're doing.
Right, well, so let's move on to the next thing in your packet. We're required now by, by the federal government, that based on the status of the elementary school, that we need to, we need to do several things. We need to inform the parents. And this is basically a form letter. We can tweak it a little, but we didn't tweak it much because I always find that if this is what the government wants us to send out, this is what we send out. And it basically explains to parents what AYP means, what they can do, what our performance is. Let's understand, again, the reality behind this. A big impetus of No Child Left Behind was to create school choice and to create opportunities for kids to go to other programs and then eventually lead to the charter and the voucher movement. We only have one elementary school, one middle school, and one high school, so we don't have to deal with school choice. If we had eight elementary schools, and four of them made AYP and four of them didn't, what we would have to do is offer those, every kid in those four schools that didn't make it, we would have to offer them the opportunity to go to one of the schools that did. Many school districts have to do that. I had to deal with that a lot in my last district. It's a nightmare. That's basically what this letter is preparing the parents for. If we had school choice, the ability to give it, that would be included in this letter. But it basically outlines what our performance is and then says what we're doing about it. So taken right out of our school improvement plan are some of the strategies there, and you can see there are the things that we always talk about, our 21st century program, you know, the reading program we have at the elementary school, the addition of park court journeys in fourth and fifth grade. These are the things that we're doing so that, you know, we're informing parents that we're doing that. Now, there will be another component that we will talk about next time, and that is called SES, and we're not really prepared to talk about that tonight, but we'll be informing you about that in the near future. Any questions? Next sheet is simply an enrollment handout. Reason, I mean, you want this anyway, but take note to the current enrollment of the high schools, 314 students. We've had...
Include the tech school?
That does not include the tech school.
But that's all that's in the building now.
We had 335 the last day of school last year. We have 314 now. We have had significant turnover in all grades this year over the summer. Several kids withdraw, several kids show up. The end result at the moment is 314 kids. So that's where our enrollment is. It's not on this sheet, maybe it's not on the next sheet, but just for your, as of today, we have 58 kindergarten students. That's 34 in the morning and 24 in the afternoon scheduled today, which means that, broken down into the half-day sections, the morning classes currently have 17 kids in them, and the AM classes have 12 kids in them. Now, that number was...
Thirty-something.
...a week ago. So we're already seeing that jump. This past week, a lot of people came in, so we certainly expect it to rise above 52. But we'll continue to monitor that. At the moment, we have a target set for maximum class size. At the moment, we're letting folks select morning and afternoon, and we haven't had to turn anybody away because we haven't reached that number yet. We will start that when we get to, I think, 20 kids in a class, then we'll start sending them, then you will only have the choice to go into the afternoon.
That was going to be my question. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Relative to the enrollment movement, do we have a sense of how many students may have elected to go to charter schools or a cyber school?
I don't today, but we could probably figure that out based on our number, but we know, we know how many we left with last year, and it was like 58, Joe, 57.
We'll see.
So we'll see what we have at the beginning of this. It hasn't changed much. You know what I mean? It's not like we lost. So we, we ended the year last year with 335. Now we're down to 315, but we haven't seen 20 more kids at the charter schools, maybe one or two. It's really been, we usually know ahead of time if someone's doing something like that. It's really been the typical transgency. It's been moves. Some of them have been phone calls. I don't live here anymore.
Next one is?
Well, some of them, yeah, it's news. The next page, we have to discuss a little bit. I wanted to make the board aware of where we stand. We have told you several times over the summer that we have the schedules completed, and we're very proud of that, but an issue has arisen, and so we're trying to address that issue with the help of several people, teachers, administrators. I will be giving you more information on this in the future and probably in an executive session if these issues turn into something other than scheduling issues. But the reason that you have this is as a resource that I'll probably be referring to next time we talk. At the moment, this is what the middle school schedule looks like, and there's a question to whether or not that meets contractual agreements. We don't want to talk about that too much more because I think we can fix it, but we'll update you more on that. But keep that sheet handy. The other reason you have it is if we don't resolve this in the next day or two, it may require some committee work, and I'll be talking to Bev about having either herself or a, another curriculum committee member help out with that process, or possibly someone else. So I'll be notifying you about that probably in the update that I mail you tomorrow. Just a few other updates. I brought samples, but I didn't think it was pertinent to make copies for everyone, but we have, we have had a few questions about start dates. Let me also clarify to everyone that most schools don't send out this information yet. I know as it gets closer, board members and other people are probably getting more questions, when does school start, who's my teacher? Most schools don't send it out till right about now, a week before school, you know, eight, nine days before school. We started sending out those letters today. We've had the information at the elementary school, K to eight students. Those classroom assignments are posted on the windows, which has been the tradition here, and we've had large numbers of people coming to visit the schools, but this year we also have it on the website. It will be on tomorrow morning. So we're moving forward in technology, but people do like to go up to the windows and see their assignments. High school students will receive a letter. Which ones went out first?
Elementary went out first.
Went out today.
Middle school's ready. That's got first in the morning.
Middle school will go out in the morning, and high school will be out either tomorrow or by Friday, and the high school students will have their assignments and their homeroom assignments. They will get their schedule in homeroom on the first day of school. So that information is out there. Also, on our website is clarification of when the first day of school is, which is Thursday, September 6. It is not Saturday, September 8, as was printed in the paper. That was an inadvertent mistake, which was no one's fault. It was just a typo. But we did put that on the website, and we also put a printable calendar on the website. Some of you may know that we try to put a full calendar that you can access on the website with all important dates. Paul will be updating that very soon. We have a goal of getting at least September up, so folks know when back-to-school nights are and those sorts of things. But that's all moving along very well. I mean, everything is there. People will have their assignments very soon, and everything should be available on the website as well, which will be new this year. Couple minor details that I wanted to make the board aware of. We will be moving cafeteria tables, and I haven't talked to Tom about this today, but we've talked about it every day for the last 10 days. I assume we're still doing that with all the work. So we have some issues with some accessibility issues for certain students, and we have cafeteria tables that are better suited for certain students. There's been an ongoing debate about round tables at the elementary school. What we will have in both schools is a combination of rectangular tables and round tables. So this will alleviate some problems. It will certainly accommodate the students who need those accommodations, and hopefully it will create for a little better flow. But we will, what we will not have is all round tables in one or the other. There was a consideration at one time to move all the round tables to the high school. We decided after several visits, measurements, talking to several people, custodial staff, cafeteria staff, that a combination of rectangular and round tables would be the best plan. So we'll be making those moves sometime soon. And it's another change, but it is a change for a very important reason. So I'm sure somebody will have an issue with that change, but keep in mind that it's a necessary change, and we did, we did look at every other possibility, so that'll be happening soon. The last thing I have for tonight is, I believe most of you are PSBA members and got the information in the mail, and every year we, what, discuss, maybe you wanted to discuss the, PSBA conference is in October. It's October 16 through 19. I'm sure Mr. Di Giuseppe will, I don't know if he wants them to contact you.
Contact Mary.
If anyone is interested, let Mary know. The advice that I will give you is that when you look in the brochure, it lists the 17th through the 19th as the conference dates, and it lists the first day, the 16th, as, they always call it something like a workshop. It's been my experience that that is the most important day. It is also the most tedious day. There will be some sessions that will not be that informative for you, but as conferences go, the next two days, you have sort of a menu of things you could choose from and attend. But on that first day, that workshop day, you're all in one room. Everybody who attends goes to that one room, and that's where you get a lot of, I find that to be the most important day. So if you're interested in going, but you don't want to go for four days, that last day, Friday, there's limited information. If you only want to go for two days or even one day, I would suggest that the first day, the 16th, is the most informative day. And let me just check my notes in the enrollments, and that is my report for the evening.
Any questions for Superintendent Wright? Nothing? Thank you. Greg? All right, we're going to open up public participation. Anybody from the public have any questions, comments, concerns? Going once, twice, public participation is closed. Right on to routine monthly business.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendments of July 24, 2012, approve the list of bills for July and August 2012, approve the treasury report for June and July 2012.
Motion by Mr. Doyle. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Kalanowski. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item approved. On to personnel.
Mr. Chairman, approve the appointment of fine professionals as district daily substitutes for 2012, 2013 school year at $100 a day, as listed.
Motion by Mr. Saxon. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Polyofko. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion passes with, motion passes with one no vote, being Mr. Doyle and one abstention, Mrs. Paglum. Item B.
Mr. Chairman, approve the following qualified professionals to the district day-to-day substitute list for 2012-2013 school year at $90 a day. You want me to read the list?
As listed.
As listed.
Motion by Mr. D'Angelo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Saxon. Questions or comments on the subs? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Abstentions? Item B approved. Item C.
Chairman, approve the following applicants to vacant supplemental positions for the 2012-2013 school year as per the master agreement, as listed.
Mrs. Kalanowski, do I have a second?
Aye.
Second by Mr. Doyle. Questions or comments?
Just, Joe, can you shed some light on as far as these supplementals? They're paid at the same...
How is it? Is it the same as a coaching, that kind of thing?
There's a base of $3,800, and then there's a percentage of by students after. So like the interact club, they only have a factor of, say, 20 percent. They would get 20 percent of $3,800, whereas maybe a basketball coach is 100 percent, so he gets the full $3,800. So none of these, none of these supplementals would be that, up that amount? Now, most of them are anywhere from, say, most of these are probably 20 to 40 percent. Okay. That's good. I'm good.
For 100 percent?
Just the... I don't really write any names. But that's not part of this list at this time. We already did the, we did this super, I mean, we did the athletic director along with the coaches.
Yes.
Maybe back in a couple of months ago meetings. Yeah, I'm just curious. Okay. I'm good.
Any other questions? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I abstain, Mary. Some motion passes with one abstention being myself. Item D.
Careperson, approve the appointment of Joanne Nye as district custodian with salary and benefits as per AFSCME agreement pending a 60-day probationary period effective...
I don't know.
Is there supposed to be a date there?
Effective...
After Labor Day. Because we're still in summer mode, we'll make it after Labor Day.
Okay. Effective after Labor Day.
So we'll make it effective...
As of the 4th of September.
September 4th.
Motion by Mrs. Paglum. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. D'Angelo. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item D approved. Item E.
Mr. Chairman, approve the appointment of Javier Serrano as Bristol High School custodian leader at an additional $1.50 per hour, effective September 4th.
Yes. Motion by Mrs. Kalanowski. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Second by Mr. Doyle. Questions or comments?
Question.
Mr. Groff.
Is this a seniority thing, or is this something that anybody could apply for?
Yes, and Mr. Rowe interviewed the applicant.
Yeah, anybody could apply for it. We prefer someone who's on the night shift because that's where coordination takes place at night. And Javier is actually the only one who put a letter in for it.
That's, I mean, it's not like a seniority thing. It was whoever wants to apply can apply.
Any other questions? All in favor? All right.
Opposed?
Abstentions? Item E approved.
Mr. Chairman, approve the Warren Snyder-John Durati school improvement plan for the 2012-2013 school year as presented on August 2, 2012.
Motion by Mrs. Paglum. Do I have a second?
Got it.
Second by Mr. Doyle. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?